The Clay County Commission to Order. We will start with our invocation. Teresa Lemming, if you would come forward. You're not new to this. It's not your first rodeo, so please proceed.
Heavenly Father, I ask you to bless our commissioners with favor and grace, wisdom and insight. Lead and guide them in the way they should go to make Clay County, Missouri, a great place to live, learn, work and play. Strengthen them as they lead with vision and virtue. I thank you for all your provisions and protection. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion, Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been moved for the approval of this evening's agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
We call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the commission? Seeing none. That brings us to our first and only discussion item. Administrator?
Yes, this evening we have a discussion item. Workforce economic update with Matt Peasal with the University of Missouri Extension.
Thank you all for. Okay. Are we on now?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all for having me. I was here last year and I spoke about economic development and workforce development in the region. As I said, my name is Matt Peasal and I'm a labor and workforce development specialist here in the region. I thank the commissioners for having me. And if anyone wants to learn more about the workforce development that's taking place through the University of Missouri Extension, they can scan the QR code on the screen. And for those of you who might not be familiar with University of Missouri Extension, it is part of the university system and that includes University of Missouri, Kansas City, Mizzou, University of Missouri, St. Louis and Missouri S&amp;T. And part of our mission is to bring all the best practices, training and knowledge and to put it to work for those on Main Street so that communities, businesses and Missourians can thrive. Within that umbrella, there's three or four different divisions. There's the Agriculture/Environment Division and within that group that include things like the Master Gardeners Program. We now have a couple of them across the region. Plant scientists, animal scientists, research, horticulture. Within the Business Community Group includes the Small Business Development Centers. We have a great center located in University of Missouri, Kansas City off of Truist and their whole mission is to help individuals start businesses and to grow and evolve their businesses. They do a lot of great work down there. We have regional developments specialists, community development specialists, those that specialize in community arts and placemaking. I'm part of the workforce development portion of that. And that page can be found at the QR code on the screen. Then we have youth and family development. So that's really focused on creating the next generation of leaders and preparing them for the workforce. That includes things like 4H. We help run the county fair and programs like that. Drilling down into my roles and responsibility here in Clay County and across the region is we have programs that are designed to help address concerns in the workforce itself. So one of the great programs that we have is called Recovery Friendly Workplace and that program is designed to help expand the workforce pipeline by helping businesses understand how to attract, retain and work with individuals who might be recovering from some sort of substance misuse. This include things like alcoholism, pain medication dependency, things like that. We have a great program called Heroes to Hives. It's about bringing veterans together, finding a new mission. This case it happens to be centered on beekeeping, but along the way they find a new mission, they find a new community now that they're no longer, you know, deployed and also teach them about the best practices of beekeeping, starting their own business and a great way to build a community and solidarity with like-minded folks with a similar experience in life. Another program we have is called Mental Health and Suicide Prevention. We have a lot of training throughout the state. We provided training and prevention in every county, including here in Clay County through the Mental Health First Aid Initiative. And its purpose is to help train individuals to identify the signs of, you know, mental stress, unwellness, and then to direct those individuals to the proper experts to do that. We've worked with North Kansas City Public Schools, training teachers there as well as a lot with the Independence Government across the river. And so we're continually working with them as far as interest here. We'd be more than happy to work with you all to bring it to your county level. Another great program is the Pre-Aprenticeship Program. It started out in Jackson County. We recently moved to Jackson County and it's a partnership between J.E. Dunn and Google over by the Dana Center and the Missouri Works Initiative and its purpose is to expand the workforce pipeline. It's been going really well. This cohort coming up in a couple of weeks had over 200 applicants for 20 positions. Along the way, over a five-week period, they received tools, certification, networking across the industry and then a stipend of $3,500. And so that's really helped us to broaden that scope and attract more qualified candidates for that. And the last one is a career pathway exploration. I spent a lot of time at the various schools here in Clay County, North Kansas City, Smithville, Carney, a couple of the other ones. And it's either talking about some of the good middle-wage jobs that can be found here locally that doesn't require a lot of debt. So the construction would be one option where you can go through apprenticeship program and receive good wages and benefits, also help prepare them for their first interview. So there's a curriculum that's designed to help them go into the interview and to be ready, put their best foot forward. But that's not really about why I'm here today. I'm really here to talk about what's going on here in the region and in Clay County. So I'll be quickly going through population trends, workforce trends and other factors impacting the workforce. So a general overview of the county, where we're at today. So as of 2024, there's about 260,000 people living in Clay County. That's a growth of about 11,000 since the census of 2020 and it's expected to continue to grow, but possibly the growth might slow down based off of forecasts. The total regional employment is about 123,000 and the median household income is about 82,000. So the middle income within the region is that. It's about 7,000 above the national average. Looking at the population trends, the overall trajectory is that Missouri is experiencing positive population growth, those taking place in some places and not others. The good news for us is that the core metro counties of Kansas City are growing and have continued to experience stable growth. This is a map here I put together of the pan, between the censuses between 2010 and 2020. So kind of the beige or peach colored ones, counties on the map are generally counties that did not grow between the two censuses. The orange includes burnt orange or counties that had even more population decline. And then the blue and light blue counties are those that experienced population growth. And so that'd be centered around Columbia, Missouri, St. Louis, Kansas City, Springfield and to a lesser extent Joplin and Cape Girardeau. But in the upper left-hand corner of that screen are the three core metro counties here on the Missouri side, which includes Jackson, Platte and Clay. Jackson had a growth of about 43,000 over that 10-year period. Clay keeping pace with them at 31,000 and then Platte had about 17,000 growth. So that's what went on before the pandemic. But I often hear, well, what's happened since the pandemic? So I pulled that data and took a look at that. So both Jackson and Clay Counties grew a little over 9,500 people during that time period, but the way it grew was a little bit different. So in Jackson County, its population growth was pretty evenly split between natural change, which is kind of like your homegrown population, more people being born than dying each year. Whereas Clay County was a little bit more reliant on net migration, people choosing to move into Clay County from somewhere else. So that represents about two-thirds of the population growth in Clay County with the fact that people were choosing to move here. Looking at the workforce trends since the pandemic, workforce continues to grow, continues to grow in Clay County and across the state. This looks at the entire metro across Kansas City. Today there's about 40,000 to 50,000 more people in the workforce than there was before the pandemic, kind of leveled off the past year or two, but we're continuing to experience growth. Zooming into Clay County, we continue to also see growth. There's some cyclicality to the workforce data, but that's to be expected. Some industries like construction, there's a period where people aren't working during the winter months. So that's all to be expected. So we're about up about 6,000 to 8,000 since the pandemic in Clay County itself. And so sometimes the conversation turns to what's going on with the labor force in your specific county itself. So if you look at how many people are over 16 that live in Clay County, that's a little over 200,000. Those that are over 16 but not working, that's about 66,000. So at first glance, it might seem like, well, those are folks that we could try to recruit from to expand our workforce. But if we drill a little bit deeper, about 29,000 of those people are 65 and older. So those folks are likely not to be in the workforce, possibly working part-time. So that gets us down around 30,000, 35,000. Then you have to take out part of the population because they're still in high school or they're in college, are receiving additional training and certifications, or are parents staying home taking care of their children because childcare is pretty expensive these days. And so by the time you're done with all that, you don't really have a very large surplus of workers that are living here or potential workers that are sitting on the sidelines not working here. And part of that is being driven by the youth populations across the state. Last year I put together a short, two-page report, make it easy for folks to digest. It's available at that QR code. But I looked at each county in the state, looking at the population that's about to retire in the next 10 years and then the population that's going to enter the workforce potentially in the next 10 years. So on the screen there, the green counties and all the core metro counties, Kansas City are green, they have a positive ratio. So if you took number of senior individuals working divided by the number of future individuals, you'd want a positive number greater than one. So if you had a number of 1.1, for example, that would mean there's 110 potential future workers over 100 potential retirees. So that just kind of way to estimate that. At the bottom of the screen, I looked at the metro, so all Missouri metros, it's about one to one. So about one person potentially entering for everyone exiting. So better than being less than one, but the non-metro county is a little bit less, .93. So not the best situation, but again, Kansas City region is doing better than particularly St. Louis region and northern Missouri itself. Some counties are .7, .75. So that means you're losing almost one potential worker out of four when they retire. But if we go back in time, this is where it gets really interesting from my perspective. We looked at the region, Clay, Jackson and Platte. Back in 2000 during that first decade there, the replacement ratio is 1.71. So 171 individuals coming into age of work, well, for every 100 that would be retiring. Today it's closer to 1.07 for our region here. And so we would have had a potential surplus of people in our communities that we could recruit from about 60,000. Today that's declined for the next 10 years about 10,000. So again, still a positive worker surplus potentially, but they might not have the skills or, you know, the interest in the jobs that are opening. I might be very talented and be good at math, but that doesn't mean I'd make a good surgeon, for example. So there's always some mismatch in the skills itself. If we look at Missouri, it was also much higher, close to 1.6. Today it's less than one. We went from a surplus of over 300,000 down today of an estimated surplus over the next 10 years of 17,000 fewer people. So again, the labor market is getting tighter. There not going to be as the excess number of people that we would have had just a few decades ago. And so that kind of changes the dynamics for businesses and how they recruit and things of that nature. So there are some factors limiting the growth of the workforce. The biggest one would be, of course, the baby boomers are retiring. Great for them, but that also creates opportunities for those who are still in the workforce, opportunities to take new positions, develop new skills, maybe land better jobs. The challenges of substance misuse, so if someone gets hurt, become dependent on pain medication, it becomes difficult for them to become or remain rather, you know, a dependable worker. Suicide rates are taking folks out of the workforce. And every time someone takes their life, so to speak, you know, that has a ripple effect. It doesn't just affect them, it affects their loved ones, it affects community members. And so there's consequences to that. Then of course, poor health where people are just maybe not as healthy as they would like to be. So by the end of this decade, there'll be almost 79 million baby boomers that will be eligible to retire, eligible for Medicare, who have likely left the workforce. That's one out of four or about 10,000 people every day. And we're kind of hitting the peak period of that over the next couple of years. So a lot of folks that haven't retired early will be retiring in the next four to five years. Briefly looking at substance misuse, part of the population that's maybe not as engaged or working as much as historically would be that core population of 25 to 54-year-olds. That's always a part of the workforce that participates at the highest rate. As you get older than 54, people tend to retire before 25. You might still be in school or trying to figure your life out. But amongst that population, about 11% of men are not working and not looking for work. Now there's reasons for that, but that's part of the population can we try to tap, try to expand that workforce. Programs like the Missouri Works Initiative and the Pre-Aprenticeship Program that I mentioned is trying to do exactly that and is having some great success. And so when the survey was conducted, about half those individuals who weren't working and weren't looking for work, particularly amongst the men, that they'd taken pain medication within the last 47 or within the last 24 hours. And so that suggests there's some sort of underlying health issue that's maybe taking them out of the workforce. So looking at the trends moving forward and workforce development, we think about the workforce pipeline, the majority of workforce, of course, comes locally and that comes from our education systems, particularly through the K through 12 system. And then that feeds into what comes after that. So after high school, they can either choose to enter the workforce directly, they could go into an apprenticeship program, which are growing across the state, great option for learn while you earn and not occurring debt. We have technical schools, we have military options, two-year and four-year colleges, but then from all that comes to the workforce. So I was curious, you know, what does our K through 12 system here look like in Clay County? So first I took a look at the population trends, the number of births in the region. There's a bit of a baby bump, so to speak, between 2005, 2010, bit of a baby boom. And so it increased during that time period. So I said, okay, let's move forward in time from back in 2010 to 2015 and those kids should now be in our school systems. And so I mapped out Platte and Clay Counties. Left side of the screen is Clay County. If it's blue, that means the population grew since 2015. If it's red, that indicates some degree of decline, just fewer people enrolled in that district. Within Clay County itself, Smithville has positive population growth for the high school students. North Kansas City, Liberty had a lot of growth, about grew by about 1,000 students, so 30% growth over that time period. Carney wasn't growing in this time period. And so that's kind of be what we'd expect since we had that large group of kids being born 10, 15 years ago, moving through our school system here. But then if we go further in the workforce pipeline to our K through five population, we begin to see a little bit different trend. So in Platte County, about half of the school districts are blue, meaning population growth, red or yellow, you know, some degree of population decline. I zoomed in on Liberty, for example. So the K through five population compared 2023 to 2015, they have about 500 to 600 fewer kids in their schools, declined about 10%. Interestingly, Carney kind of went the other direction. They increased their population. North Kansas City Public Schools is doing pretty good with maintaining their enrollment in that district as well, though then Excelsior Springs has declined some. And so what this suggests, when you look at it from a workforce perspective, is that there are just fewer future workers that are, you know, being born and living in our communities here than there was even just 10, 15 years ago. And so this suggests that there's likely to continue to be a lot of job openings as long as the economy is strong and continuing to grow. It's going to be a challenge to find enough workers for some industries. We're building a lot of manufacturing around the region, a lot of data centers, this creates a lot of jobs, but it also means you have to be more competitive to attract and retain employees. Just briefly looking at the largest industries in Clay County, the government is the largest with over 15,000. Manufacture were particularly high, we're almost twice the national average for manufacturing. Shouldn't be a surprise when we have the Clay Como plant just down the street and it's, I believe it's considered the most productive auto manufacturing plant in the United States. So they produce more vehicles than anywhere else per plant and they're looking to expand that as well. We have retail trades doing well, creating a lot of jobs, then construction and manufacturing. And I expect those to continue to grow as there's efforts to bring manufacturing back to the United States, investing in advanced manufacturing and data centers. In Clay County, that's where you see the data itself. Manufacturing, growth industries right now is at over 2,000 jobs to manufacturing, transportation and warehousing, construction just under 1,000 and then government. And so that's kind of where a lot of the job creation is taking place as of 2025. But the challenge is going to be likely that simply to try to understand how do we expand that workforce pipeline and looking to see how can we tap that portion of the population that may be being overlooked. So substance misuse would be an example. That's why we have the Recovery Friendly Workplace Program. We're developing some new ones that will center on the justice involved. We're piloting that in Springfield this fall, hoping to bring it here to the region, maybe even to Clay County this winter. And in that model, we bring together the judicial system, local workforce development agencies and employers and help them understand the barriers that are keeping folks out of the workforce and how can we move forward to streamline that pipeline. And one example of this would be the Pre-Aprenticeship Program that I mentioned, you know, the recruiter for that program goes to different prisons and recruits directly for folks as they're exiting out there. And we had some good luck placing individuals in the construction industry and really gave them a new start after being incarcerated. We often overlook our veterans population. They have a lot of great technical skills, a lot of leadership organizational skills, but we don't always know how to translate the language of the military skills descriptions to the language of the job descriptions that we find in the private sector. Companies can retool or upskill, so that takes a commitment on the employer's side to invest in that and then flexible work hours, whether for young people or maybe even for retirees. Can you retain a portion of your workforce part-time in order to keep that talent and skill right there at your place of employment? Looking to the future, I think, I don't see a drastic change as long as the economy is, you know, continuing as it is. It's going to be a challenge for businesses as well as local governments to find the workers that they need. And in working towards that, I just want to quickly highlight a couple of programs. So in October, end of September, we're having the Connecting Entrepreneur Communities Conference. This year, Excelsior Springs will be in the spotlight and over the course of those three days, they'll be highlighting from the employer perspective what they're doing well, how they're using entrepreneurship to redevelop and revitalize downtown areas and their communities at large. If folks are interested in that, the QR code takes you to the registration. There's also some online webinars in preparation for that. But again, I encourage anyone who's interested in that perspective of using entrepreneurship, small business development as a economic development tool, this would be a great example of that. And then in this fall, I'll be co-hosting a workforce summit and it's going to be bringing stakeholders together, employers, workforce development agencies together to have a discussion about where are the workforce training gaps taking place, what is needed. We can have our own perspective from the data side, but we need employers to come to tell us, okay, we need training about advanced manufacturing or we need training for our next generation of managers, whatever it might be. And so the purpose is to connect workforce and employers to existing resources, but then also to have that conversation to see if there's a gap that our local colleges, if they're not providing it, is there a need for us to step into that gap? So it could be that the community colleges aren't able to address a certain level of training or certification or UMKC doesn't have that program there. So can we fill that gap and bring a customized training to employers directly? And that's available through that QR code. For those who want to stay connected and learn more, we have the Show Me Most Success podcast. We feature a lot of the great work, both in business development and other areas. I recently had two podcasts highlighting my leadership development courses and my students who have gone on to great things after completing it through UMKC. One of them now is the Director of the Missouri Humanities, great success story there. We also have the MU Extension Workforce Navigator Newsletter. I share data, resources and tools, all at no cost. It's a quarterly concept, comes out once a month or four times a year on the yellow QR code. And then to learn more broadly about MU Extension, we have a monthly newsletter, covers everything from 4H all the way down to family, health and nutrition, business development, it's all available there at that last QR code. So for those of you who would like to indulge me as a public sector employee, I'm asked to check in with the people to see if I'm providing timely and relevant data. Takes less than two minutes to fill that out with a survey on the QR code. But while we do that, I'm happy to entertain questions from anyone in the audience or for the commissioners themselves.
Something I was kind of curious about was the, you were showing the migrant people that we come in, but migrant, you don't mean internationally, you mean outside of the area that we're in, that we're under discussion with, right?
So when I say people moving in, that would include both, you know, domestic migration, so Jackson County, Johnson County, California, but it also includes those moving in from other countries as well.
So I guess my question is, because we seem to have a very large proportion coming into the area, do you have some information, tell us roughly where they're coming from and if we can expect the same kind of movement from those areas? Because at some point they may well, that may well change those circumstances.
Sure. I haven't seen the data about where they're coming from specifically. When I broke it down by whether the domestic or international migration or natural growth for Clay County, it's pretty evenly split. So about roughly one-third was domestic migration, one-third was international and one-third was natural population growth. So it's kind of a nice balance from my perspective. So you're not directly relying on one source of population growth, but I wasn't able to see, you know, which area they're coming from. As far as continuing migration, I mean, immigration right now is a big topic of debate and right now there are fewer people coming into the country. So barring a new development of immigration policy, I suspect we'll see fewer international immigrants coming into the country for the foreseeable future.
And I was mainly thinking in terms of the.
And so the purpose is to connect workforce and employers to existing resources, but then also to have that conversation to see if there's a gap that our local colleges, if they're not providing it, is there a need for us to step into that gap? So it could be that the community colleges aren't able to address a certain level of training or certification, or UMKC doesn't have that program there. So can we fill that gap and bring a customized training to employers directly? And that's available through that QR code. For those who want to stay connected and learn more, we have the Show Me Most Success podcast. We feature a lot of the great work, both in business development and other areas. I recently had two podcasts highlighting my leadership development courses and my students who have gone on to great things after completing it through UMKC. One of them now is the Director of the Missouri Humanities, great success story there. We also have the MU Extension Workforce Navigator Newsletter. I share data, resources, and tools, all at no cost. It's a quarterly concept, comes out once a month, or four times a year on the yellow QR code. And then to learn more broadly about MU Extension, we have a monthly newsletter. Covers everything from 4H all the way down to family, health, and nutrition, business development. It's all available there at that last QR code. So for those of you who would like to indulge me as a public sector employee, I'm asked to check in with the people to see if I'm providing timely and relevant data. Takes less than two minutes to fill that out with a survey on the QR code. But while we do that, I'm happy to entertain questions from anyone in the audience or for the commissioners themselves.
Something I was kind of curious about was the, you were showing the migrant people that we come in. But migrant, you don't mean internationally, you mean outside of the area that we're in, that we're under discussion with, right?
So when I say people moving in, that would include both, you know, domestic migration. So Jackson County, Johnson County, California. But it also includes those moving in from other countries as well.
So I guess my question is, because we seem to have a very large proportion coming into the area. Do you have some information, tell us roughly where they're coming from? And if we can expect the same kind of movement from those areas? Because at some point, they may well, that may well change those circumstances.
Sure. I haven't seen the data about where they're coming from specifically. When I broke it down by whether the domestic or international migration or natural growth, for Clay County, it's pretty evenly split. So about roughly one-third was domestic migration, one-third was international, and one-third was natural population growth. So it's kind of a nice balance from my perspective. So you're not directly relying on one source of population growth. But I wasn't able to see, you know, which area they're coming from. As far as continuing migration, I mean, immigration right now is a big topic of debate. And right now, there are fewer people coming into the country. So barring a new development of immigration policy, I suspect we'll see fewer international immigrants coming into the country for the foreseeable future.
And I was mainly thinking in terms of the, just the pipeline of people coming in regardless of where they come from. And do you have anything to indicate what it is that we are doing right to attract these, these folks in so that we can continue doing the right thing? Is it schools? Is it, could you have any, any information?
I mean, I have kind of a gut level guess, but I don't have the data to support it. But I suspect, you know, affordability, good schools, safe communities are all factors that, you know, attract people to here. When we look at where people are moving from domestically, a lot of times it's just people moving from one county to the next. People from Jackson County might move over to Clay County or move to Platt County. And so we kind of see this cyclical motion across the region. We don't see as much migration from, say, Johnson County to the Missouri side. But we do see a lot of movement between each of the three counties, as well as Cass County, just kind of moving in a circular motion. I think there are also some evidence to suggest that maybe as folks get older, they might be moving from areas that are maybe more rural or maybe don't have good access to healthcare, and they're moving closer either to family members or closer to where, you know, the largest and best hospitals and specialists can be found. So the data is starting to lean to see that when we look at the rural populations, those 65 and older, a lot of times we're seeing that that's declining when we would expect them to be increasing because we have the baby boomers retiring. So you'd expect counties in that portion to be growing, but in some counties it's not. So that suggests that folks are leaving or possibly have passed away. But primarily leaving would be my best guess.
Thank you. Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Over here.
Where?
Right here.
Oh, sorry. Just looked totally over there.
Right in front of you. Yeah. I need to eat my Wheaties apparently. So just a couple of quick questions. One, I'm curious to know what, if anything, Extension does with the Northland Workforce Development Center? That what, as you probably know, there's a huge investment that is being made.
There is.
And I'm just kind of curious to know how you interact with them.
I mean, I'm very well that, well aware that it's going on. I've met with Brian Nohler. I believe he's in charge of the fundraising there. We had some initial conversations, you know, there's supposed to be some partnerships within the new facility. Maybe it's a possibility between the university or MU Extension and them. But I think it's too early on to know. But, you know, from my perspective, I think there's a lot of alignment between our mission and their mission as well. So I'm always open to that. Or, you know, if you have any doors you want to open, just let me know. I'm happy to continue the conversation.
Well, I think the state of Missouri has made a quite a big investment. So I would think someone can get you in there.
Sure. But it's exciting, and I think it's going to be great for the region.
Absolutely. The other question was really on, from one of your graphs, a couple of them that referenced the giant contribution that government makes to the workforce here in Clay County. I am assuming that when you say government, you are also including school districts?
Correct. So anything in the public sector, be it school districts, you have, you know, a lot of large and good schools here. So you have a lot of, that it also include firefighters, police, you know, anything that's essentially being funded through taxpayer monies would be included in that category.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I asked that question because some may think, think we're a little top-heavy. But that includes teachers too. So I want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Just say federal workers, and a lot of them are located in Johnson and Jackson County anyway.
Sure, sure. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Withington.
Hey, thank you for coming. Yeah, this was, I really enjoyed this presentation. You know, here in a couple of weeks, I've asked that we have a, a discussion topic to coincide with our budget about hiring a Director of Economic Development for the county. You know, Clay County lags behind our peer counties when it comes to job growth, average wage increases, capital investment in major projects, workforce and talent pipelines. You know, it's, we've been able to get Amazon and Meta, but, you know, those create a lot of construction jobs, right? But once those construction jobs are done, data centers don't employ a whole lot of people. So, yeah, I would love for you to be a part of that discussion. I'll send you, when we get it confirmed, I'll send you the info. Because, yeah, we, we got a lot of work to do here in Clay County. It's not a lot of, there's not a lot of job growth in this county. I know Ford's getting ready to hire about 150 new people or whatever, but we need more than that. So thank you for coming tonight.
I appreciate that. And when you look at the data where people live versus where they work, there is a bit of a net migration out of Clay County to other counties to work.
Well, you know, that's like.
It kind of serves a bit of a bedroom community.
Yeah, so, you know, like Johnson County, they made an investment, you know, decades ago, a generation ago, that they wanted to have Class A office space. And they, and they've, they've attracted a lot of headquarters, right? Clay County lost our largest employer in Cerner. Our, you know, if, taking out the government, if we were to lose Ford, this county would be screwed.
It is definitely a major employer here, for sure.
And so I'm not, you know, I don't want to compete with Ford or anything. But, you know, we need, we can't, we can't rely on one company, right? We need a whole basket of companies for people to be able to work at. And it sucks when you have to leave your county to, to go find a job somewhere else. So, yeah, I'd like to have you be a part of that discussion.
I appreciate that. Just send me the information. And then my contact information is also on this last slide here. You can either follow me on LinkedIn or just add me directly to your contacts. And I'll be sure to send a version of the presentation to everyone. So I'll send it to Brandy.
I'm going to send you a LinkedIn connection right now.
I appreciate it. So happy to work with you all in any ways that I can. And so, you know, focusing on how do you create the multiplier effects? And so one example would be like manufacturing. So if you look at Panasonic, for example, they're having this huge plant, but already started seeing a lot of suppliers and other distribution centers, and maybe either smaller parts manufacturers cropping up all around it, even though they just opened up literally officially at least last week. And so.
Well, that's like the Ford plant here. Last metric I saw was it contributed to like 50,000 ancillary jobs, you know, and stuff like that. So, yeah, if we can start landing big projects like that in this county, we'd be, we'd be pretty good.
Sure, I appreciate it.
Does that conclude your remarks? Okay, thank you. Before I go to Commissioner Carpenter, I've got to say, yeah, that the Ford plant is certainly something that we are very fortunate to have that base of manufacturing, that manufacturing, you know, dynamo basically here. And it's, it's one of those things that we were lucky we didn't lose it about 15 years ago. Hopefully, we will not be losing it going forward. But we have to be vigilant about how we treat our business partners. Commissioner Carpenter.
Hey, yeah, I just want to say thanks, Matt, for doing this. I love information like this, and you do a really great job presenting it. It's good to see you again, and I hope you'll keep coming back.
I appreciate it. I look forward to it.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for being here. And I assume we'll be able to get a copy of this slide deck.
Yep, I'll be sure to send it out the next day or two.
Great. Thank you. I see no, I see no one else chiming in, so we appreciate you being here. Okay, that concludes discussion items. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
Yes, tonight, the consent agenda has four items. The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless the commissioner requests, a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. And the four items we have is, first is commission meeting minutes from June 26th and the July 10th meetings, as well as 2025-2020 approval of invoice payments for Clay County a period of June, July 12th to July 17th of 2025. Total of 602 invoices totaling an amount of $1,729,890.90. The other one is 2025-2022 approval of a two-year service agreement with GPS tracking and software and four additional units with smart planet software, which is for our road and bridge department. The other one is 2025-2023 approval of a budget transfer to provide sufficient payroll funding for the remainder of the 2025 with our auditor's office. That'd be the four items we have for consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a motion attached to our consent agenda, Commissioner Johnson?
Moving to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion's been moved for the approval of this evening's consent agenda discussion. Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington? Commissioner Withington?
Yes, I agree.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. That moves us right on to our regular agenda. First item is 2025-221. Administrator?
Yes, 2025-2021 is approval of invoice payments for Clay County Prosecutor's Office in the period of July 12th through July 17th for 2025. We have a total of 12 invoices totaling an amount of $3,724.68.
Commissioner Johnson?
Moving to approve 2025-221.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2025-221. Discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Can I accuse myself?
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Thank you. That brings us to the second item, which is 2025-224. Administrator?
Yes, we have 2025-224. It's transferred between funds, an amount of $39,000 to finance an annual $2,750 stipend for 21 deputies and officers holding corporal designation with an extra responsibilities for the remainder of 2025. And we have Amy from our Sheriff's Department here.
Captain, proceed.
Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. Good evening, Commissioners. This, this request may seem odd on the heels of the compensation and classification study that we just completed. And I know that the sheriff had had some conversations with our previous county administrator and likely you all as well and the budget team about what the rank of corporal was going to look like. And you'll note that the classification plan, and I could go very deep into the weeds on this, so I don't mean to bore you all, but you'll notice that there is no rank designated corporal on the comp and class study. However, when we look at the 24/7 operations that we have in place, even with the number of sergeants that we have, occasionally you're going to run into a period of time where A, you don't have a sergeant available, and/or B, you have a situation where we are going to have to train the employees that we do have. So I was very interested in your, your, your presentation just now. What does that look like in the years that we have succession planning to do for such a large public organization? How are we going to train our supervisors, right? So even though there is no specific rank for corporal on the classification, we do ask these, the people in these positions to have additional supervisory and additional responsibilities. And so rather than adjust pay scale, early last year, well, actually, I said 2025, but really this has been going on for about a year now that we have provided a stipend to these corporal positions, kind of like we do with an FTO. So rather than an hourly pay increase, we just say, here's the stipend. We're going to spread it across the 26 payments or pay periods, and that will compensate them for the duties they take on. So all of that to say, I worked really closely with our auditor, Victor Hurlbert, who is so kind to me to help me prepare these documents so that I can understand them and bring them to you. And he has provided the numbers. He has helped me understand where we need to transfer from. And so I am asking on behalf of the Sheriff's Office for you to approve this transfer for the remainder of this year to address our stipends for corporals. And then next year, it's my understanding that that will already be built into the budget positions.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawson?
A couple of questions. So the people that are corporals now, they did get a raise, right?
They got an adjustment. I don't know specifically what their pay looks like now. I do know that you, we don't have corporals anymore. They're going to show as a deputy. So on the comp and class study, it's my understanding that, and HR Director Callahan can help me understand that if I, if I misspeak. But it's my understanding that they were viewed as deputies on the compensation plan and placed accordingly. So the rank, the designation of corporal is sort of an in-house function that we assign to them when we need to tap into their abilities to supervise. Yeah.
So this coming year, when we do the budget, these individuals will be designated as corporal so that they can see a difference in the salary?
They will be, yes, they will be designated through ADP as receiving a stipend because of where they are assigned in the Sheriff's Office. But you will not see Corporal Smith on the budget positions. You will see Deputy Smith.
Why would that be?
Well, I wasn't present in the conversations that Sheriff Aiken had, but it's my understanding that his goal was at one time to reduce and then eliminate the rank of corporal. But it became apparent to him that once we got into this process, you do have to have somebody available for a 24/7 operation to step up if the sergeants are not available. So, and in some cases, you have people like our detectives. They are, if you'll excuse me, I'm going to have to ask Kim Callahan if there is a, is it a deputy designation and an investigator designation? Does that rank exist?
Let's see, I'll have to look at my, this is Kim Callahan, HR Director. The easiest way to explain this is Sheriff Aiken spoke to McGrath, and this was the way that he wanted to set up the program. So the stipend is for these people that will be doing, like she said, filling in when they need a fill-in. So it doesn't mean that this person will have it the whole year, correct? It would be who, this is why we're making it a stipend. Okay, so it's for the people that they're going to need to use at that time. So it won't be the same person the whole year long. It might be. But with the stipend, they're able to change it to the people that they need. Does that make sense?
No, it really doesn't to me. I mean, that's fine if that's the way he wants to do it. I just don't see the reason, the, the thought process in saying, you know, this week Suzie's going to be a corporal, you know? Do you see what I'm saying? That's the way it sounds. But that's probably not the case, right? If you're a corporal, you're a corporal.
No.
Oh. All right.
In our detention center, for instance, we have two shifts. And then we have two sergeants assigned to each shift. And there's an A shift and a B shift, so people can have time off. But the nature of the detention center is complicated. There is a lot going on. And if I have, I have a sergeant on the floor, and I don't want to get too deep in the weeds there, but if I have a sergeant on the floor and I have a sergeant in booking, and something comes up that I need to direct some supervisory talent at a problem, and I can't tap into either one of those sergeants, then I need to have a third person that I can say, hey, listen, just on this very limited issue, I need you to go handle this with some authority that you have that this other line personnel, this deputy, does not. And so they move in and out of a supervisory role sometimes once a month, sometimes once a shift, it just depends. But they are not the designated shift supervisor.
Okay, I see exactly what you're saying.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I hope that helps.
And so give some thought to this. I don't, and maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way. But, but I feel like if, if, say, there are those individuals in the jail or wherever they are that are capable of taking on the supervisory role, then why aren't they like Deputy Two instead of Deputy One that just never does that? You know, and what's wrong with corporals? You know, if they're willing to take on this responsibility, I, I just don't see why, you know, they're named corporals straight across the board. But you can talk to the sheriff about that. I, I just thought it was strange that they're calling them corporals in this situation, and they get this extra bit of money. But day to day, they're not. They're just regular old guys. So I just.
But they are also, they are also learning skills and have put themselves in a position to be, they've shown us that they are willing to take on more responsibility and learn to be able to step up into those roles, which is really helpful. Again, when you have a sergeant that leaves, retires, if you don't, that's great if you have time to plan for it. But if you don't and you lose somebody quickly, we need to be able to backfill that supervisory position. And those corporals are the people that. supervisory position, and those corporals are the people that we're going to be looking at.
But they're not really corporals, they're just temporary corporals when you need them to be.
Well, the rank of corporal doesn't exist on the comp and class study, but within the Sheriff's Office organizational chart and organizational plan and how we divide duties, then yes, we do, it's an informal rank, and I mean no offense to my, to my coworkers and my friends that have that designation, I mean no offense to them, okay? Because their job is important and their rank is necessary within the operations of the Sheriff's Office. But looking at the overall comp and class study, it was decided that that did not need to be a formal part of the pay structure and the classification.
Okay. I, nothing else.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, if I understand this, Captain, the rank of corporal existed before the class and comp study, and we eliminated it in this class and comp study.
Correct.
But we're going to continue to pay those people that were corporals before, before, before the designation was changed, essentially.
Yes, but not in the same way.
Not in the same way.
Because previously, prior to the comp and class, they would get a 5% pay increase.
Right.
That was tied to, again, a formal rank.
Okay.
But that is no longer the case. We are no longer, that, that was eliminated. The sheriff decided we are not going to move forward with a 5% pay increase for these positions.
Okay.
Because again, we have to look at what is the, the, what is the supervisory load on that position? It's not constant, it's not a 40-hour position. It is a, hey, we need to, to pull you in for this specific thing. And there's really no way to schedule for it. So, and, and I know that, that you have a lot of experience with this, but for everyone else, what I would say is, yes, we have to pick and just be able to pick them to come in, deal with an issue that requires supervision, but we are no longer paying a 5% to a position that doesn't supervise all the time. So the stipend is in place to compensate them for the times that we do need to call on them.
So it's only utilized when you use them for that, for that role?
Yes.
It's not, it's not, okay, so it's not, their pay isn't, their hourly rate has not increased then on a regular basis?
Their hourly rate does not increase, no. The stipend is just, I believe there's even a pay code for the stipend.
I see, yeah.
Yeah, correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I move to approve 2025-224.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2025-224. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain. That concludes our regular agenda. That brings us to county administrator comments. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, a couple of comments tonight. One, we have the Mason Memorial Cowboy Up Triathlon is this Sunday, July 27th at Smithville Lake. The other one is, there was a film crew here this week that was working on some of our marketing for our World Cup. It was something that was put in place a little while ago before, and they were able to come this week to do some filming. The other one is, we held a CPR class with some staff this week, had about 35 attendees. And also, there's a yoga class this Saturday at Camp Branch Campground at 9:00 AM, if anyone's interested in yoga. That'd be it. Other than that, our meeting, our next business meeting is going to be July 31st at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. That brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Withington, would you like to, Commissioner Lawson?
No.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
We'll go ahead and get you recognized. There you are.
Thank you, just very briefly, since we met last week, my youngest son turned 18, my oldest son turned 20. My parents celebrated their 57th wedding anniversary, and my dad turned 85. And so I wanted to wish all of them happy anniversary and happy birthdays, since I did not do so last week. You got to be a good son and father, and so I thought I would take care of it today. So thank you very much.
I'm sure Hallmark Cars very much appreciates your business.
Yes, they do.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter? Proceed.
Thank you. I'll just say, I haven't seen the latest, latest forecast, but they're talking about maybe upwards of, you know, three to eight inches of rain tonight, significant flash flooding possible. Obviously, you know, what we saw recently down in Texas was a reminder that that can get dangerous and loss of life, so just putting it out there as a PSA to take care of tonight, and, you know, hopefully it won't be too bad.
Thank you. I just want to say that this week I was, I had the opportunity to visit the Ferris Farm just a little bit east of here. And I got to tell you, it's, it's quite a treasure. And one of the reasons I bring that up, apart from the fact that I, I think it's great that we have those assets here, is that often when we think of our park system, we think just in terms of Smithville Lake. And while that is certainly a tremendous asset that we have and that we need to continue to, to treasure, I think we should not allow ourselves to not take into account places like Ferris Farms and the rest of them, because it's a really wonderful educational experience. And I would urge any commissioner who has the ability to go out and visit some of these sites in addition to Smithville Lake, because it really gives you a much more full perspective. The thing that, one of the things that impressed me beyond the historical significance and the, and the natural beauty were the Friends of Ferris Farms. They were having their meeting when I was invited in. And that is something I think that we do try to be cognizant of, but I think we cannot say enough, and that is how much we appreciate the volunteers who step up to the plate. They get, they get no glory necessarily, they get no pay certainly, and they are there because they, of their affection for this county, for the people, and for a way of life that they are trying to preserve and that they are trying to put a spotlight on so that it does not disappear, so that those young people in our community can look back and understand what it took to get the county to this point. So kudos to Ferris Farms. I think we need to make sure that we, we have them certainly at top of mind. And as I say, try to pick a day, maybe it's not quite as hot as the day I went, if you can manage it, but apart from the heat, it was just a wonderful experience. So kudos once again to those folks. With that, we are adjourned.